All right, I guess we're at the witching hour if we want to get started because Margaret's got to go back to teaching, I think.
I do.
Okay. All right, now Sue, since, I don't know, do we know if we have anybody from the public on?
Not that I see.
Okay. All right, so, you know, well, we're, I'll do this protocol anyway, since we're being recorded. I'll start off by, in the event that somebody is going to listen to this and doesn't have the video, I'm going to call off each member's name and you just acknowledge the fact that you're there.
And what's today's date and what meeting is it, Dick?
Yep, this is, today's date is May 7th, 11:02 a.m. It is the meeting of the Newbury Town Library Board of Trustees. And the roll call of the trustees. Dick Raven.
Here.
Alex Burke.
Here.
Terry Litterer.
Yeah.
Margaret Grimes.
Present.
Dick Pasere, here. And in attendance also is Jean Ackerly, Director of the Library.
Here.
And we raced with Susan Noyes, the IT and Communications Director for the town of Newbury, to help us muddle our way through this new technology and new way of doing business. Thank you, so.
You're welcome.
Okay. I guess we're doing this in accordance with executive orders, an executive order from the Governor, dated March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, due to the outbreak of the Corona, I'm sorry, the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public parties to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting, we have an option, will or will not feature public comment. And I believe we normally would encourage people to share their thoughts and comments with us if they were participating with us, so. I think we wouldn't, I don't want to speak for everybody, I think we would allow and encourage public comment. We look for public guidance. So. For this meeting, the Board of Trustees is convening by telephone and video conference via Zoom as posted on the agenda in the town's website. So, with that having been said, meeting is called to order. We'll start with approval of the minutes of the last meeting, which was sometime in February, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it was February 18th, in fact. And I will read the minutes. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 p.m. In attendance were Dick Pasere, Margaret Grimes, Terry Litterst, Alex Burke, Jean Ackerly, and Erin Toomey. The Board unanimously voted to approve the minutes from the January 23rd meeting. Jean presented her Director's Report. The Board unanimously voted to approve the updated Newbury Town Library Collection Development Policy. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 18th at 5:00 p.m. The meeting adjourned at 7:15 p.m. And then there's a list of documents that we had, which I don't know if I need to read those or not. Probably not.
Probably not. They will be available with the minutes if anybody is, you know. Okay, so those are the minutes from our last meeting. Is there a motion to?
Could I just make a couple of corrections?
Of course.
Sure, sure.
So Erin's has gone back to her maiden name, so it is now, I can never say it right, Ouiimet.
Can you just spell it for me, please?
Yes, O-U-I-M-E-T.
Excellent, okay.
And then with the collection development, I believe that was the local history collection development policy?
Not the Newbury Town Library?
No. It was a Newbury Town Library Local History Collection Development Policy.
Oh, local, okay, so I need to insert the word "local."
Well, local.
Before collection.
Local history.
Right, local history, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve the minutes?
As amended.
As amended?
Motion made, is there a second? Terry seconds it, Terry seconds it, okay. Motion made and seconded, all in favor. Aye, raising your hand, everyone.
Aye.
It was unanimous? Okay, all right. We'll move on to the Director's Report. Jean?
Okay. So I will start in with the budget, I guess.
Okay.
Pardon the side of my face because I'm looking at the other computer, the other laptop. I just updated this this morning because I went into a little bit of a panic yesterday about the MAR. So I was on the phone for a while this morning with Mary Rose Quinn from the MBLC and she talked me off the cliff and I think things are reasonably good, all things considered, with the MAR. So I didn't have quite as much time to spend with the budget as I had wanted. But basically you can see that we've passed 87% of the year, which is mind-boggling. We've spent 77% of our overall budget, so that includes the funds from state aid and gift to memorial. We've spent 76% of our municipal budget. And that leaves about roughly $21,000 in our municipal budget for the remainder of the year. Whoops, I just made everything bigger there. So I think that's about it, in terms of expenses. There are expenses coming up. I'm buying a couple of laptops for the library, I can, we can talk about that later or now, it's up to you. But I think we'll be, we'll be a little bit under in our expenses. So I can't say exactly how much at this point, but it may be worth our while to consider using some funds from FY20 to implement procedures and building supplies at the library. We'll definitely be using them for cleaning supplies, which at this point I haven't been able to get my hand on, but presumably at some point we'll be needing to really stock up on wipes, cleansing wipes and disinfectant sprays and things like that. Dick Pasere had said that, I think that Tracy Blaze, Town Administrator, would supply Plexiglas for the circ desk. I haven't heard anything about that yet and I'd also like to try and get some for the children's circ desk. And I'm not sure which budget that is coming out of, so those are all things to consider.
It's my understanding, Jean, that Tracy's response was that the DPW was going to be working to install Plexiglas dividers, the circulation desk, and the payment stations at Town Hall. So it was, I'm guessing at this, based on what she said, that would be an expense that the town would be carrying. She hasn't looked, you know.
Okay.
Russ to pay for it, so I'm assuming that's going to be coming out of, out of James' budget, I'm guessing. And I think budgetary issues are probably up in the air for everybody right now.
Yes. Yes, and the supplies, for the, you know, COVID-19 related supplies, I've already been submitting those invoices to both the accountant and Mike Riley, the police chief, for reimbursement, so presumably we're going to be reimbursed for most of those.
Yep, and again, yeah, again, her response to the question about the PPE, you know, staff will be provided with gloves, face masks, and sanitizer, sanitizing wipes, and the Marmada. So.
Okay.
I'm assuming that's going to be consistent with what they're doing at Town Hall also.
Yeah. I guess one question is, what happens to those funds if there's reimbursement? I'm kind of assuming that goes back into the general fund? Rather than the library account?
Yeah, I think the budget is probably kind of uncertain. If some departments actually haven't fully spent their money, I'm not sure that they have. Can those funds, normally those funds automatically go away on June 18th. With circumstances where we don't have a budget for next year yet, would those funds be rolled over until next year? Some, yeah, so this is the unanswered question.
Yeah, yeah, which is why I think it's probably important to try and meet again, you know, maybe right in the beginning of June, I don't know, it all depends on what the Governor says, obviously. We really can't plan much of anything anymore.
No, no, absolutely, I think that's, we've got to stay flexible as we go forward.
Yep, okay.
I have a question, Jean.
Yep.
Question, Jean?
Yep.
I know we don't know when we're going to be reopening and need these supplies, but I imagine there is a long lead time to getting them in because of the demand.
A lead time on ordering them, is that what you said?
Some things take months now, right?
Absolutely, I ordered, unfortunately, I had 50,000 masks, not 50,000, 50. Whoa, masks. I couldn't sell them on the black market.
In your dreams.
Anyway, I had 50 and they were delivered on Wednesday with the expectation that Jean was going to be there to accept them, but she was sick on Wednesday. So I ran over for a little bit during the morning, but then I had to get back here for meetings and whatnot. And so they probably got sent back, so that was, that's kind of.
Yeah, I was thinking about all those, all those wipes and everything, you know, that's.
The wipe, yeah, the wipes, well, I've been talking with Mike Riley and he suggested WB Mason because I haven't found them anywhere. I found paper towels. I found paper towels at Staples, but that was it. No disinfectant spray, I bought a big gallon of some god-awful thing that they use in hospitals that hopefully the cleaners can use to, you know, to disinfect on an intense level, maybe in bathrooms and things, but it's like a refill thing, it's got a squirt thing. But no just Lysol spray or anything like that, so I'm going to keep looking. I'm going to look at WB Mason today.
I assume there are approved, then, you have to use, but surprisingly, the hardware store had a lot in Newbury, of cleaning supplies at the Circle. Yeah, I had to go in there for something else, hypothetically, for the garden I'm doing. And they had a lot.
I don't, I don't think it has to be vendor-approved, I think it's more important that it's EPA-approved, so, you know, Lysol, I think wherever we can get them, you know, we should get them, so.
I didn't search for wipes there, but they definitely had surface cleaners and things like that.
All right. Well, if, you know, if you see them in there again, let me know. Or even pick them up yourself, you can be reimbursed by the town. Because obviously we'll get them wherever we can get them, the Plum Island Grill has been selling, selling cleaning supplies. So I guess, you know, whoever has a vendor that's got them is selling them, so. Any more questions on the expense budget? All right, well then, moving on to wages. We're at 87% of the year again, we've spent 81%. That's primarily because of the staff meetings, I've said this before. That all gets tallied at the end of the year and of course now we're having our staff meetings during regular working hours, so we won't be spending everything that was budgeted for salaries from state aid this year, so that's a good thing. And we're a little bit under, what is it, 6%, so that's, that's a good thing. Any question on wages?
We're good enough to make it, we're good enough to make it through the fiscal year.
Yeah, yep. Unless I'm.
Are we currently paying all salaries?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Are we currently paying all salaries during the shutdown?
Yes, staff is getting compensated at their normal levels and they're also still getting compensated for that, those extra hours that Jane does and Erin does with state aid. So that's, that's where that state aid balance comes from. And of course it remains to be seen what, what we do with that particular state aid salaries, reimbursement for '21.
'21 is so uncertain. We have to wait and see what the town does budgetarily, you know.
Right, and I think, I think the meeting with Kingcom and the Selectmen is on the 12th, so I'm assuming that's when they will make their determinations. So it'd probably be a good idea to tune into that. Okay, where's my Director's Report? Okay. So I'll go on, facilities, the building was closed to the public Friday, March 20th, by the town of Newbury due to COVID-19 virus concerns. I lowered the temperatures in the building and shortened the amount of time the building was considered occupied in the HVAC system at that time. The cleaners were able to really get the building clean at first. Now they are focused on disinfecting the workstations of the staff that are currently working in the building. DPW paved two new parking spaces next to the Grassy Island that has been in bad shape for years. They still need to paint the parking space lines. And I will be receiving a quote shortly, I just signed an application for the EV charging stations, the application was for the incentives from the state, which are still very favorable and could make the project almost free, if, again, if I'm understanding that correctly. So I have a meeting with them, I think, next week. I didn't know if Dick and Alex might want to join in since you were involved with this from the beginning.
Oh, yeah.
Phone call. Okay, so that meeting is at 10 o'clock, so I guess it's a phone, I think it's a phone meeting, but I'll provide you with more information on that.
Okay.
That's great.
Yeah, especially because, you know, they're, they're supposed to get a quote for two stations or one station. The one station, you might remember, means we'd lose two parking spaces. The two stations means we'd lose four. So he seemed to think that we were actually going to save more money if we did the two stations because of the incentives and the way they're set up. But I asked him to give us a quote for both because we're concerned about losing parking spaces, but of course now we've gained two, so that's kind of nice. And, you know, people aren't going to be coming into the building for a while. There probably won't be big crowds and baseball and all that for a while, so we can, you know, we've got time to figure that all out, but they, you know, they said these incentives are going to go away, so I figured I should at least stick with it and see if it's something we want to do. And at some point bring the town in on it as well, because I really haven't kept them in the loop. I invited James that one time, but I'm not sure he ever got that text, so. To be continued on that.
You know, and a shout out and a thanks to James and the guys for doing that paving. We've been bugging them for, I don't know if you remember, right at the entrance, that parking area, that green area was very nice, but it just got beat up all the time. This now will even make it easier for them to plow in the winter. Great line, they don't have to go around the dog anymore, so.
Right.
Thanks, James and DPW.
Okay. Programming, adults and children, seems like a century ago, but the Suffragettes and Corselits program was held the night before we closed. There was a lot of touching and dancing and all kinds of things happening that night, so hopefully everybody's healthy that attended that. And it was a fun program with 14 in attendance. As you know, all public programming and meetings have been canceled indefinitely. All programs have been virtual since the library closed and will most likely continue to be virtual for some time to come. Virtual cooking program was fantastic, creativity from your pantry. And it drew 35 people, she's, did you tune in, Dick?
Yeah, yeah, it was really good.
Yeah, she's great. You know, I would, I tuned into her Facebook thing on Friday and it was wonderful.
Yeah, I know, Stella's been following us since then too, so. It was very good.
And very, that was very affordable, so. She's been a friend of libraries for a long time.
Jean, I have a quick question, is that, was that recorded anywhere and is that posted on our website?
I think it, um, it's not on ours, I think she says it would be on her website.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And then she's, she's, I was going to say performing, but she's doing these at many, many libraries, so all of those, I mean, that's the thing with virtual programming, is, you know, you can go to any library's program without leaving your house, so I would definitely recommend her. She, she knows her stuff and, you know, we all watch cooking programs and stuff, so, at least I do. But she just, she's just very down-to-earth and she's really good at answering the questions directly and I really would recommend her.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it was well done, and I know she's got something coming up with the Duxbury Library only because Stella was tracking it to see what else she was going to do, so. Yeah.
Huh. All right, where was I? So Katie has been doing virtual storytimes on Zoom. We had been linking to, to, you know, celebrities and various people every day doing storytimes and I recently found out that that, which makes sense to a certain extent, can't be counted as statistics with the state aid report. And so Katie already had it, that she was going to be, you know, moving into doing it herself. We're all supposed to do, do some, and as I mentioned yesterday, the town administrator and others, so those will be able to be recorded for programming for state aid statistics. So that's, that's good. The, she's been doing a Zoom Minecraft club, which, they don't actually play Minecraft, they just sort of check in with each other and talk and get silly, I guess. And a support group for moms that I don't think has taken off, but I think the two moms that went were very happy they did.
They needed it, I bet.
Say that again?
They needed it, I bet.
Yes, so did Katie. And the trivia thing has, I think, well over 40 people registered now, so this should be interesting.
That's tomorrow night, right, Jean?
That's tomorrow night, yeah. So, and you do teams, it's been a little confusing to me how that works because you can be on a team with somebody that's in another location, but I guess you're on a cell phone, you know, having a conversation, and so it should be very interesting. What else? Plans are still in the making for a virtual approach to summer reading for children and may possibly adults, but definitely for children. The children's librarians in the state, in the country basically are just pulling their hair out trying to figure out how to keep with the incentives and keep kids reading and not have the summer, what is it called, Margaret, the summer lag or?
Summer slide.
Summer slide, right. So that's something, that's important, important stuff. Okay, let's see. So staff, staff has been working from home for six weeks. We've been having, in the beginning, twice weekly staff meetings, now we're down to one. There's always a lot to catch up on. And there's a ton of emails, which is sometimes brain-finding. No staff has had a loss for something to do, I asked everybody to, everybody's been basically logging what they've been doing and so I asked to see them a couple of weeks ago and I was absolutely blown away by all the things that they're doing, some things that, you know, were suggested, professional development things that I put in front of them and other things, but they're just, they're all just taking the initiative to work on other projects. Marcia's been researching employment resources, job searching resources and all of that because obviously that's going to be a big deal moving forward for patrons. Pauline did a, made her own virtual, digital, virtual escape room, which is harder than you might think. And she just, she really enjoyed that. We've all been sort of pitching in on the weekly emails because it's, it's a lot of work for Erin, so we take turns writing the letter and you may have seen them, all the goofy videos and Jane reading to the donkey and all of that, which has gotten very positive feedback.
Fabulous, fabulous, though.
Especially with her Brooklyn accent, that's the best part. But yeah, so, and, you know, that stuff keeps us going and definitely keeps us more connected to the patrons and the feedback is very positive, so that's, you know, that's going to continue as much as we can make it continue. I think I kind of covered a lot of that. Oh, yes, so when we return to servicing the public, we will be better at our jobs than we were before and I can say that realistically because people have been picking up, you know, technical skills and things that they simply didn't have the time for before, or in some cases, not really even the interest, so that's been very positive. And we're, the four of us are working in the budget, in the budget, in the building, each on our own, four days a week, as stated on the, in the Director's Report here. And Erin and Pauline are continuing to work from home. And Erin can pretty much do whatever she needs to do from home. Figure out how to do this, okay? So I've attended quite a few friends' meetings and had conversations with Tammy. They, you know, they, like everybody, feel like they've had the rug pulled out from under them in terms of fundraising. And they got a little panicky. But then, of course, I was able to get them to realize all the money they saved on the programming that we were supposed to have, the in-person programming. So, you know, I'm actually under budget now, before I was over budget for that. So they, they regrouped, they had hoped to have, the, their first inclination was to have the plant sale, which is pretty much their biggest fundraiser, and a huge community event, people love it and look forward to it and they've had people inquiring about it. They wanted to have it at the library, thinking in the parking lot with social distancing and everything else, but I guess I had, yeah, I had put an email into Tracy and Mike Riley and Deb Rogers. I haven't heard back, but I told them I don't, you know, I don't think that's probably going to work. And then their next thing was to have it at Pam's house because probably 80% of the plants come from Pam's garden, she digs them up. But that, you know, I ran that by Dick Pasere and we both agreed that that could be tricky too, especially with the Governor's orders of no, you know, no numbers over 10 and everything else. So, right, what they're looking at now is, they're just going to, because she has to dig the plants out anyway, they have to come out of her garden, so she's just going to dig them up, you know, throw them in pots and have a yard sale.
What about having contactless delivery with volunteers? Virtual viewing of the plant?
Well, I think that is, that actually, they have two plans they're looking at right now and I think they're going to finalize them in two weeks. One would include that, where they would take pictures and put them online and people would order. That obviously is a little bit more involved. The first one would be just basically, you know, have a very informal yard sale and then they would donate the money to the friends, so it wouldn't be an official friends' yard sale. So I don't know where that's all going to end up and if you have any thoughts about it, you might want to contact Tammy Cotter. Okay.
Same vein, I think the West Newbury Garden Club canceled there.
Yeah.
Because of this whole stuff.
Yeah.
I don't think we're doing anything that encourages people to go.
I, I don't think we're doing anything that encourages people to gather or unsafe group. Even if it's off the property, even if it's
Yeah, that's essentially
Bad idea socially.
Yeah, yeah. That's essentially what Jean and I had talked about when Pam was talking about doing this at her house. Then that'll just, the whole gathering aspect of it. And then this is a residential neighborhood. You're not gonna be bringing in all of this traffic and they're just generous, all kinds of problems for the neighborhood. So, so I think
Well, it begs a different
Yes, Alex.
Yes, Alex.
By way of perspective, the Museum of Old Newbury has canceled its annual garden tour, which was scheduled this year, thirteen, fourteen June. Um, nervousness, of course, on part of some of the participants, the hosts, relative to people gathering and traipsing through the yard as usual. So postponement and reconfiguration everywhere.
Yeah.
For the spring and early summer events. It's terribly sad, but what can you do?
Yeah. And my question was, um, if, you know, I, because I said this to them yesterday. I said, somebody pointed out that there was a yard sale down her street last weekend. And I, I said, but I'm not sure, like if you were to check with the town, if, if they would allow it. Or, you know, I don't know what the legality is. I don't know anything about it. Um, just because they had it doesn't mean it's something that they should be having. And, you know, and they emphasize, oh, we'll do social distancing and all of that. But I said, if the, it's not really an order. I guess it's an advisory or maybe it's an order um of no more than ten people gathered at a time. Um, you know, I just, to give them a shot.
I think that was part, that was part of the governor's executive order.
It was an exec, that was the executive order. So, you know, it, it wouldn't have our name on it, you know, they'd basically just be putting it out there. But I just cautioned them, even just doing it as yourself, you know, I'm not, I'm not certain. So they're gonna play that by ear.
How many people have touched the vase that you're looking at, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, it's not, they're not cut flowers. They're, they're garden plants.
Talking about
But they're in pots.
Any kind of, any kind of yard sale, where people are picking it up and putting it down, you know, I'm, a few times I go to Tender Crop, I'm very careful. And if I grab a pet of something, whether it's the perfect one or not, it goes in the cart, you know, I'm not
Right.
Training myself not to be the way normally I am, which is weighing and testing.
Right. So, I was thinking of that with books, Dick. You pick up the book, it's yours, you know.
Exactly.
You can't put it back on the shelf, so.
No, the, the chain of effort is significant.
And I think, you know, recognizing that this is their, their big fundraiser and obviously that impacts on us going forward. Uh, I think the, they have to rethink alternatives um for funding. And we also have to look at alternatives for, for funding the programs. I mean, you know, we still have monies in the gifted memorial and state aid that we may, you know, it's, and there is a reserve. Uh, we may have to start looking at and tapping into in order to execute some of the programming that we have going forward. And again, that whole landscape is wide open in terms of what the programming is gonna look like. So, whole team of us, uh, you know, so. And I think part of they just back off from it and look for alternatives going forward.
You might, it might be helpful if you attend the next meeting, Dick, because they, they all got very sad faces when I gave them a dose of reality yesterday.
Yeah, that was, that was a very positive thing I just said, yes. Don't make them feel good.
Um, so we, I'll keep you posted on that.
Okay.
And they're all, most of them are attending today, I think. Um, a webinar that I sent their way about fundraising. Uh, it's for foundations and friends and fundraising in the era of COVID nineteen, so. So they are
Terry, you had a comment?
Well, I just wanted to bring up the, uh, project that I had shown Jean before that was done at my hometown library, where they put a calendar together with pictures of different people in the city reading books in the pool at the Y and here and there. And they made money from that. It's a big commitment, but that's something that could be done without having a lot of people. Um, it could be like a remember twenty twenty kind of situation.
Right.
And have photographs of people who have been reading for the, um, children's books or other things like that too, and then be sold. Uh, it's just now there's time versus there wasn't enough time in organization before to consider doing something like that.
Right. I, I think there, you know, speaking for myself and I'm just from what I, the take I got from them too is it's a, it's a tricky time to be asking for, for money, you know. There, there's so many dying needs.
Yeah. I, I think also while the calendar is great, I think remember twenty twenty really should They forget twenty twenty. Those are just my two cents.
Well, because a hundred years from now, people are gonna wonder what it was like going through it. And there's not so much journaling and things.
Well, there's a good project for you, Terry, because there are several libraries, including Newbury Port, that are compiling journals and, you know, they're putting together a, you know, a historic current, you know, currently historic curation of whatever the public wants to put their way.
That still might be interesting to do, right?
Yeah.
Like, yeah, exactly. And, you know, I love the idea, but I just, the staff just can't take that on right now. But, uh, and then when I saw Newbury Port was doing, I just, I thought that was great. So at least, you know, there'll be something. Maybe, maybe we can kind of piggyback with them on that. I can look into that. Um, think, you know, add in things that would be specifically Newbury. But yeah, a time cap, so that would be very interesting. I mean, we already have one at the library, but to have one specifically for twenty twenty, that's an interesting suggestion, Sue. We put masks in there, I guess, huh? All the different, different ones that are made.
A video of kind of life in the day of COVID nineteen, right?
Yeah.
There and, yeah. Have people send their footage and, you know, kind of, we can help put it all together, you know.
I can show my roots.
And yeah, even now and then put it aside for a few years.
Give yourself a haircut?
Yeah. Not really, tell me.
Yeah, I know.
I just read a marvelous essay in The New Yorker by, uh, they had a whole collection of various writers dealing with what their life is like now. And the, the very funny and accurate writer Gary Steingart, I don't know if you've ever read him, wrote a whole essay in which he referred to things before December or January as, in caps, the before time and everything after as the new truth. And sort of what it feels like.
It does.
Yeah.
It does.
Wow. All right, Jean.
So yeah, I think I'm done with that.
Okay. Good, all right. So we'll do, uh, I guess the, the new business, we've been kind of talking around it, and that's the closure and the reopening because of COVID nineteen.
Yep.
Yep. So you put together a, uh, a key fact to keep in mind as we approach reopening the building. So why don't we start with that?
Okay, I'm just trying to find it on my laptop here. So Dick, if you wanna start.
Okay.
Well, here it is.
Yep, it's, you know, you started off with, uh, with staff concerns, so let's start with that. Um, first one, uh, what do we need to consider to help staff feel comfortable coming back in, in the building? And this is, a lot of this is basically going to be dialogue and discussion that, that we're gonna be having going forward, I think, for, uh, for a little while until we, um, we have a clearer understanding, I wanna say this upfront, is we're gonna, we're gonna take guidance from town and from the state and professional organizations, other libraries as to what's going on there. Kind of gathering information going forward. We're not gonna rush into anything, um, I don't think. Uh, and we're gonna do this slowly and methodically and, uh, uh, give everybody the comfort level that they need in order to come to the library to work, number one, and to participate in whatever's going on there. So, um, this, uh, this, this is the beginning of a, I think, a, um, process that's gonna take a bit of time. And as we go forward, I think we're gonna, if nothing else, we have to be extremely flexible in terms of, of adjusting and adapting as, as information becomes more available. That having been said, everybody has, I think, a copy of what concerns us.
Yeah, I wanna say this. There are two issues. One is what, what the experts on high say are safe practices to do. And the second part is how to manage staff who may or may not feel comfortable even with those practices.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Because everybody's gonna respond differently as, you know, some people are shopping for themselves and I'm having to ask somebody to do it for me because of my particular situation in life. And so I think that's the thing we have to figure out. And I haven't any clarity about it. I just wanna say that's the problem.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right.
If that doesn't work for me, then how do we manage?
Yes, and I, that
Your problem.
Right, and I, um, I, I pulled the town, I pulled the staff, pulled the staff is the word I'm looking for. Um, just two weeks ago, I think, just to kind of get their feelings about being back in the building and reopening. Not so much to get all the myriad of, of procedures and things that we have to worry about, but, um, just to get kind of how they were feeling. And, um, it, you know, it was very helpful for me. And it, you know, it became clear that with, with some of them, they, they really were, they wanted as much contact or exchange engagement, maybe is a better word, with town officials as was possible, you know, before being asked to go back to work. Um, and that's where it gets, you know, a little interesting because, um, like, opening up a library is very different than opening up a town hall or even a police station. And I just wanna, you know, I'm, that's one reason I asked you all to meet was I just wanna make sure we have a voice with the town. Um, I know I want to have a voice with the town, but I know my, the staff does as well. So, um, you know, I just, I wanna be sure that, that, I mean, the last directive was if everything stays the same, from the town, is that if everything stays the same, all staff are expected to report their regular hours on May eighteenth. And, you know, that may be doable. I don't know. Um, but I wanna make sure that there's an understanding that the building won't be open yet and, you know, all of that. So I don't know, you know, everything's uncertain. I don't know what everybody feels in their gut is going to happen on May eighteenth, if we're gonna be extended further. I don't know. But I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page with how we, you know, how we feel we wanna proceed. Because I don't know who calls the shots. I don't, I don't know if the town administrator says you need to open the building on June first. If that's how that works, I have no idea.
Yeah, I would, I would assume that, that they're group that's now leading the whole pandemic process in the town, which is the, I think Mike Riley is the lead on that, the one with the, uh, the public health folks. And I would assume Tracy also. And then I'm sure they'll, they'll come up with a, uh, a plan that will be, I would assume be presented to the selectmen that would be approved. And if it is, I think it's, it's not done, uh, I think it's done universally for the town. It's not done by town hall versus the council on aging versus the police station versus the library. You know, and I think we, we have to obviously look at our situation as, as a certain amount of nuances to with it a different than opening up, as you said, the police station or town hall. Um, you know, uh, just the way we interact with people and, uh, the number of people we have coming into the building. We have to think about, uh, you know, those kinds of things that we, uh, building's gonna be opened up to full capacity. I mean, and again, somebody's gonna have to come up with those directives. And so I think there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of who can make decisions. And we want the staff to feel comfortable about coming back. Uh, and, you know, we may not be able to satisfy the comfort level for everybody. That's a reality. And everybody has their own emotional connection to this. And I know just in, in this house, who, who people here have different responses to it, you know? Um, so it's, I can imagine with the staffs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, uh, it's still, we're, we're at the very beginning of this learning curve. I, I don't have any clear view on it, very candid.
Is there any other town institution that's parallel to the library in terms of space use and stuff? Where people come and stay together or stay for periods of time?
Council on Aging.
That's what I was, that's the only one I
Yeah, that's the only one I can think of, Terry. I think, I think, and Sue can probably speak to it and feel free, Sue, anytime you want to throw in a comment on this. Uh, you know, it, it, it is a public meeting. Um, you know, I, I think town hall works a little differently because people come in randomly. Unless they're having a designated meeting for a specific purpose, like a selectmen's meeting or board meeting. People come in randomly through all of the day, but council on aging, you're gonna have people coming in and spending, you know, I don't think they're there every day, but the days that they're there, they could be spending a fair amount of time there. Yeah. So, yeah, that, that would be similar.
Yeah, I think certainly for the town, you have, you know, all of the departments on the first floor um that have frequent public interaction. Um, they can be singular or they can be a handful of them. Um, upstairs, it's, it's a little bit different, but we do get foot traffic up here. And then there's all of the public meetings, you know. So beyond the selectmen and the, um, planning board, for instance, um, there's many, many others that haven't been able to meet since February. So, uh, I know that Tracy, along with the board of health, Deb Rogers and the chief of police, Mike Riley, our emergency management director, you know, meet faithfully every day. And I'm sure they're trying to figure out what all of this means because it's still changing day to day. So, you know, as long as, you know, I think the governor has said he wants to see those numbers continue to go down. Um, you know, that's kind of what we're waiting for, for a period of time. And what happens if it spikes up again?
Yeah.
You know, I think it's, a decision may be made, but it's also subject to change.
True.
Yeah, the, the big issues, you know, that, just that we really need to keep in mind, I think, are the materials, obviously, that, you know, that a library is all about handling materials. Um, and, and children for the most part. Um, you know, because with schools being closed, if children are allowed in the building, we're gonna get bombarded. Um, so there are going to have to be limits, you know, there may be limits to the number of people in the building. But, um, you know, I, I've talked to other directors in other towns that say they don't, I think one of them said their town manager said, don't expect children in the building until September. Um, so, you know, we, there, we can do all kinds of things of, you know, people in one part of the building and out through the meeting room, that's, you know, this is, this is for when we eventually open to the public. Um, but they won't, they won't be able to browse the collection. I mean, unless we have a policy where, like you at Tender Crop, Dick, you know, you pick up a book, it's yours. Um, you know, that's, I mean, I was thinking of, of how tough this is gonna be. And then I thought of Jabberwocky Bookstore. I don't know, you know, how she's ever gonna get that going up again. But obviously that's a separate, a separate issue. But, um, it really is the quarantining materials that are returned, which is huge. Uh, letting children into the building and vulnerable people and materials and checkout. Um, one thing that we might wanna consider, especially with a little bit of extra in our budget, is self-checkout. It's not something I ever really wanted to do in Newbury, but a couple of libraries are considering it, smaller libraries for this very purpose. Um, you know, it would probably be set up where the new books are now. where the new books are now, so people would come right in and on their way out the door, they could, you know, check themselves out. I got, I had gotten a quote on it back before the pandemic and it wasn't as expensive as I thought. So I can, you know, I can give you numbers on that if you want. But um, you know,
Yeah.
Those are, those are the concerns that I just want to make sure are being considered um by the town, and, you know, ideally, I, I, I think it'd be great to be part of the discussion, quite honestly. I'm not certain that's going to happen.
Well, no, I think-
They certainly understand your services are different than our services, you know, based on um, who you're servicing and, and what you have to offer, so I think that's clearly understood, but um, I think, you know, if, if Dick calls, Tracy, I'm sure should be very happy to have a discussion and, and, you know, convey what the feelings of the staff are and, um, you know, see if she's amenable to that.
Yep.
Yeah, no, no.
It's one thing, you know, if you pick up a book, it's, it's nothing to see a four-year-old run along the stacks.
Exactly.
Touching every book.
For sure.
Like she might want to, you know, I've seen it happen and I've seen like, you know, it's, it's a lot of fun when you're that age.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, no, this is, this presents some unique challenges, yes, that's for sure, so. I, I guess I, I need to do more research personally in order to become more knowledgeable about this in terms of what others are doing. Trying to wrap my head around it. I, I kind of focused on kind of the simple things like uh, you know, maybe reducing the amount of furniture we have in the building so that people can't card their gate. Eliminating the, the upholstered furniture because we can't wipe that down. Um, you know, instead of having eight people at the table, there's only four people at the table and that kind of stuff, so, you know, I can, I can wrap my head around that, but the kids walking down the uh, the aisles and rubbing books, or even, even me going in or anybody else going in and taking off, you know, this book or that book or the music or the movies or whatever it is, it's just, man, it's uh, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know how to wrap my head around this.
Yeah, it's, it's major.
Yeah.
Um.
I heard, I heard from my neighbor who was intending to rent his house out through Airbnb this summer in several different clumps of time. They have changed their policies so that even though people had a reservation, there has to be 24 hours between renters and there has to be a thorough house cleaning with all of the products. So it changes the financial basis and it changes um the expectation of cleaning, and so they decided not to, they decided to cancel all the rentals this year.
Yeah.
Uh, affecting a lot of things.
Oh, absolutely.
But the cleaning is a huge one in the library.
Yeah.
But the, the, the thing with cleaning is, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, you can clean like nuts in the library, clean all the surfaces, get everything um, disinfected, and, but all it takes is one infected person to touch it, and, you know, all the cleaning in the world got you nowhere.
Exactly. So you have to be cleaning constantly like they are-
Exactly. Exactly, and I think one, somebody somewhere said something about having, you know, a, a custodian or a cleaner or somebody on site, you know, wiping down door handles just like they're doing at the grocery store, or, you know, making, keeping an eye on people to make sure they're not, you know, handling the materials if they're not supposed to be. You know, that kind of stuff. I mean, again, I, I, hopefully, most of that is down the road because I just, I can't conceive that we'll be, well, that we'll be opening the building anytime before June 1st to the public.
Okay.
Um, I know there are other towns that are talking about it not even being that soon. And I will tell you also that I'm meeting with the directors of Newbury Port, um, West Newbury, Georgetown, Rowley, and I think maybe Merrimack, um, because another consideration is um, if libraries open at different times, like just say we open, but Georgetown doesn't, we're going to get besieged not just by Newbury patrons, but by Georgetown patrons, and we will have to check out to them. That, that was a big question, but that just got established the other day. We can't, we cannot just check out to our own patrons.
Okay.
Gene, do you-
So, you know, hopefully, that's another town thing is, you know, those towns should, should be coordinating with each other.
Can I, can I just ask a question? So there, there's a, there's a difference between opening up the building to the public-
Right.
And opening up the resources to the public.
Right.
Right? So, so I think it's important to make that distinction and to also have a plan going forward and of course in concert with other libraries and other communities, but um, you know, there's, there's so much done online in normal times to order a book or check out a book or whatever you want to call it. Um, and then have a staff person, we talked about this briefly, I think at the beginning of the meeting or maybe a couple of days ago, whatever it was. Um, and then have those resources on a table outside, so, so we can service the public before we can let the public in.
Absolutely, and, and that's the plan for us and most libraries to do basically curbside pickup.
Okay.
And it will, it will, for, you know, at least the first couple of weeks, it will just be Newbury materials. Because there will be no interlibrary loan.
Right, sure.
So, and, you know, my, the way that I'm conceiving it and that a lot of people are, is that it's, you know, we'll have some hopefully paper bags with handles and people will call in to make requests or make them online and we'll do what we always do, you know, pull, do the pull list, find out what the holds are and um, as long as they're just, you know, for Newbury patrons, we will um, put them in the bags and I will either, you know, this all needs to be determined, we'll either put them in the trunk for them, or, you know, there are privacy issues with lining them up um, next to each other because then you see what your neighbor is taking out, so that's another factor. But, you know, all this, all this will be ironed out and, you know, all the specifics that are on here were just things that I wanted to make sure everybody was thinking about as we move forward.
Gene, how is the privacy different than standing next to your neighbor at the checkout counter and seeing what they're taking out?
It's just always considered an issue. You know, that, some libraries have self-pickup for holds, but we've always avoided that because, you know, you, they're all lined up on the shelf and people can see what, you know, what their neighbor is taking out, but you're right. You know, you can presumably see it if, when you're standing behind them at the checkout counter, but it's always been considered two different things.
But what if it's just, what if the person is, is assigned a number, not a name? Like, I don't understand.
Um,
That would be a privacy thing.
Well, that's an idea, sign a number and put that on the back. Yeah.
Then you don't know, then it's anonymous. As long as you know what your number is, you know that those are your items, that could be-
Very good, Margaret. All these librarians have been talking about all this stuff. I don't think anybody suggested that, so.
There you go, from an elementary school math teacher.
There you go, yep.
Numbers, that's the numbers.
Perfect.
I can't help myself.
That's good.
My library's a card number even.
A what?
My library card number.
Right, exactly, like the last six or eight digits of their card number.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Although somebody could take a picture of that and then go check it, yeah.
Oh, good.
That would work.
You're talking soccer material.
Yeah. So, I mean, this is, you know, again, this is helpful, just, we have this document to kind of work from. I've sent you all other things, so Dick, don't kill yourself doing research because I have sent you stuff you can read.
No, no, I, you know, I'm, I'm not. I, I went on to the MBLC yesterday. They have some-
Good.
On there. Just by the way, I found, maybe it was on the MBLC.
I can't hear you, Dick.
Oh, the, um, I found on, online yesterday that, as for a summer reading program, I think it was on the MBLC, that um, Boston Bruins and the First Lady have announced the reading program for the summer where there's awards with Bruins for the reading, so again, it's something if the library chooses to participate in that, uh, uh, I think it was the MBLC I saw it on. Yeah, it was the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners is teaming up with the Boston Bruins and the First Lady for the summer reading program. It's, oh, kids and adults, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
That's something, uh, you know, so I find, yeah, there is stuff out there and I'm not going to knock myself out. Actually, I'm thinking with this list that you have, uh, I, I may share that with Tracy then so that she knows what the level of concern and some of the issues that are uh, that, um, will be dealing with going forward. Um, and I have found that, as, as you saw the response to my questions that I had posed to her, she, she turned that around and responded to me within a day, so I'm uh, was grateful for, for her timely response to that. I will, I will send this along to her and share it with her so that as they're putting their plans together, she knows where we're coming from and that we've started this process, this this thought process that we have ongoing, so.
And I, you, I think I told you that I've sent our draft plan. I sent that to all of you and I sent it to Tracy and Mike and Deb as well.
Okay, good, good, good.
And it is really a draft.
And that's fine, no, no, as I said earlier, I think this is, we're going to be being flexible and adjusting this thing going forward. We're going to find out what works, what doesn't work. Um, you know, we're going to get pushback on things and uh, you know, this is, it's going to be, it's all new territory for everybody, so I, you know.
Sure.
So, you know, we'll make the best of it. And uh, you know, the key is to keep everybody safe and healthy. Now, that's our objective. You know, if, you're always going to err on the side of caution, at least I am. You know, want to be critical of us after the fact that we shouldn't have, we were over-cautious, that's terrific. In the forefront of this, I think we want to be overly cautious. I mean, this is, God only knows what, what this thing is and how it's going to reemerge if it is going to reemerge. I know it screwed up all my travel plans, so, you know. I'm not going to Disney World.
You're going to Disney World.
But I, but I still have Vietnam on the list for September, so.
Oh, God.
No, no, no.
Hey, Vietnam is-
You don't, you don't think I'm going, huh?
Vietnam is-
Much, it's a much better place to be than it is here, Vietnam.
You're right.
Yeah, no, I, I-
You can get there, stay there.
Finish your meeting with, or the other libraries. The one, talking about talking to the local town.
You talking to me, Terry?
Yes, yes.
Yes, uh, that's next um, Tuesday. I post, it was going to happen this week, but I asked if it could be next week because I thought perhaps I would have heard something else from the town. I'm, I'm not sure that will happen, but um, yeah, so, you know, I don't, I don't know what's going to come of it. All the libraries in the consortium are doing that, the ones in the more western part of the consortium are getting together, the ones down near uh, Cape Ann are getting together, so. You know, it, it suddenly became obvious to us that we really needed to try and coordinate this as best as possible because,
No.
like I said, we'll get clobbered if, if we open and Georgetown and Rowley don't.
Yeah, no, it's going to be coordinated.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well.
Um.
All right, the next item on the agenda, unless you want to keep talking about this, uh, you know.
Well, it's probably related if it's the grants because
Grants.
I, you know, they're, the one that we were all looking at, which was through the um, Mass Humanities and
Right.
Um, you know, it's, it's available for operational expenses, but I don't really know, you know, I don't know what's going on with the budget yet, so. I couldn't really figure out how to approach that and, and what to apply for. I think a lot of things are going to come down the pike. I know there's, the CARE Act designated a lot of money for local cultural organizations. So, my, what I've been hearing is that the Cultural Council, you know, might be available to help us with programming in October.
Oh, okay.
But this is all stuff that we don't know yet, so it, it obviously makes planning tricky.
Yeah.
Um, and a lot of it will be reimbursement-based, such as the cleaning supplies. So, the, the grants thing seems a little bit stuck in the stuck in the water, whatever the expression is right now, unless somebody knows something I don't know.
I, I read that, you know, you sent that link, Gene, to for those COVID grants, and it was very vague, seemed to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Hard to know whether we could thread the needle or not. I mean, it was
Exactly.
A little generic, so I think it was hard to say, oh, great, we, we comply with X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the 2021 budget gets cut, you know, 10%, then, then we've got something to, to work with, but um, or, I mean, I, we wouldn't look at it for, to, to um, get the new position that we had hoped to get in 2021, and I very much doubt we're not, doubt we're going to get. Right, so.
You know, as I've said before, if, if, if we got the same amount we got this year, I'd be happy.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But I, God only knows what, what it's going to look like, so.
Yeah.
Speaking of which, does anybody know what the plan is for town meeting?
They're still making that determination.
Yeah.
No one wants to know more than I do, believe me.
Oh, that's right.
It's going to be a very busy Zoom screen, that's all I can say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, yeah, this, you must have, you must have been very busy the past two months, Sue.
I'm still very busy.
I, I can imagine, yeah.
I've got to screen all the boards and committees now on the Zoom. Um,
Ah.
Well, um, and get them all set and ready with the expectation that this could be our model for a little while, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Hmm, yeah.
Now here are all the sad faces now, too. But we are learning.
Absolutely, yeah. We're all learning new things, so that's a good thing.
Yep. It is.
It is, yes, yeah. Oh, God. Oh, well, and, and, is there anything else to be accomplished today?
It, but felt good for me just to see you all and, and know we're all on the same page and, you know, it's just some, it is isolating working from home, no doubt about it.
Yeah, no, it is, yeah.
So it's just good to know that we're, that's that overused phrase, all in us together.
Yeah, that we are, that we are, and we'll figure it out going forward. Um, I'm not quite sure what the, what the landscape is going to look like six months from now. It'll be different, but you know, hopefully it'll be better, you know, a lot of, hopefully some good comes out of this in terms of technology and uh, you know, the way of conducting business and so forth, and, you know, we look forward to the days that we can have people gathering in the building again, so.
Yeah.
I was just looking at the numbers in terms of, we had, last year, we had over 8,000 kids tend programming in, in the building last year, so. You know, that's uh, nice to be able to have half of that this year, so, you know.
Yeah, I, I never did go over the, the statistics. Did you all get a look at them? They were interesting in that um, obviously the online things all took off and Ancestry really took off.
Yeah, yes, I've been using it. Thank you.
Good.
Good. At some point, it won't be free anymore, and then you'll have to decide if you want to pay for it.
Okay.
Or hopefully come in the library.
Well, I've been using it there too, but having it online like this at home has been, been very helpful.
Good.
Yeah.
I really appreciated, Margaret and Dick, that you gave me your phone number so that I could talk to you.
Actually, that, that's something that I was thinking about. Do, do you think it would be a good idea for us all to have each other's cellphone numbers? Just?
I do.
Yeah, especially like if we're in a meeting and we're having technical issues, so um,
Imagine that.
If you have another way of connecting, I think it's good.
All right, I'll send out a, a document we can all share on there.
Yeah, I, I'm antique. I still have landline. I do have a cell.
I do too.
I don't like talking to myself on that one.
Here's my landline.
Oh, wow.
It's really-
Oh, that is, and that, that's a, a dial.
No, it's, it's actually a push button.
Oh, it is push button.
Right, it looks like a dial, but, but, yeah.
At least it's, you know, it wasn't a flashback to having a potty line.
Oh, thanks.
Yes. Yeah, oh, wow. Well, good, all right, so I will send this uh, the, the concerns list, I will uh, share that with Tracy uh, so that she knows what we're thinking about and that we've met and uh, we're starting to, I guess, brainstorm, um, and uh, Um, and uh, we'll go from there and we'll see, you know, how things lay out over the next couple of weeks or that we schedule another meeting in the beginning of June. Okay? Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, Sue, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, your help and assistance getting this thing all put together.
Don't worry.
We'll keep you, you will definitely be in the loop.
Yeah, I'm going to work with Gene one-on-one a little bit more on um Zoom and managing the meetings as a host, so.
Okay, very good.
Do we need to make a motion to close the meeting?
Do that, so who wants to make that motion? Mine was making that because she's going to go to work. We have a second. Okay, who wants a second? Okay, Terry seconded, the motion's made and seconded, all in favor.
Hi.
We're all done for today. Again, thank you, everybody, stay healthy and safe.
Thank you.
Thank you all of you.
Thanks, you too.
Ciao.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.